Yeah, my understanding. Uh, put up something that they turned.
Did you draw it that way? Okay.
No, he did. I didn't write it up. He just drew it up. I put it together.
Okay, it's just okay. So when I talked to him and said something about curious.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What'd he say? I guess then? I wish I could have. I would have charged him more.
No, 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 no. It was just when I talked to him.
Oh, great news.
I needed baking therapy. I brought like a hundred and forty gifts this week.
See, I just didn't shop. I just baked. I just give people food. I needed butter and sugar and garlic and not all together. They're separate things.
Or is it passage two?
I had no idea.
Shane, I lost my phone at home, so keep us on it. Yes, it's called.
Uh, so, yeah, the person who does the news stuff is like.
So we have need to sign.
Take it on the envelope.
I didn't know there was like a word skills. Probably not going to do it all well.
This is the new test and so three words and see if you remember them later.
Another test I'll do terribly. So we just, so we just.
I know. I thought we had. Where you know that my phone's at home because my parents are okay.
Nobody lives in this maybe.
Nah, somebody knows from this. Uh, we're getting a number. He's already out riding. So you could be that and kill me, Turner.
That way, did you get this?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Just come back here.
Uh, very send.
Yep, but who does it go to?
Uh, she got. You see this thing?
Yes, I can't about these.
You left that warm.
Yes.
Mind your A's and Q's.
Sorry.
So you're saying I, is that genuine? No, well, have it. I have it starting. I think I'll be maybe over this week. And I usually come to another acronym. We have to push everything while stuff. Putting them together. I wasn't pushing. Some way or done. Time off, sir.
Where are grades?
Um, right off of Shorewood in eighty-three, kind of across Lake North.
Wait, I was on which?
Oh, okay.
He knows. He's been there constantly. Newers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe I.
It's not like Bobby.
So we have. That's why you never. Yay, seven thirty is tall, meeting order. Like religions. One, what is it? United States of America, leader of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Oh, okay. Mr. Natalie, here, Miss Thomas. Mr. Irons, here, Mr. Kaya.
Here.
Mr. Thorn.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Bo, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Sure.
We've got five trustees in attendance. We have a forum. We have a meeting. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of December fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
I move.
Second.
Moved by both seconded by Thor and any additions or corrections for the minutes. There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nor opposed. No oppositions of passage man since they keep that off. Uh, before we go on in further this evening, we have an amendment to amend the agenda.
So I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to leave the swearing in of our police officer up to the present time.
I'm a.
Second. Moved by the avenue seconded by Brier to amend the agenda to move the new business approval of, uh, it isn't, yeah. Item B. Uh, the approval of the new officer, Jason Palo, to the current time slot. All those in pairs, you can find by saying aye.
Aye.
Nor opposed. We now change opposition to it. The agenda is changed and we now have the approval of the hiring swearing of a new citizen.
Yes, I'd also like to make a motion that we offer, um, we offer Jason Palo, uh, the position of part-time police officer in the village of Sleepy Hollow at a rate of twenty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents an hour per contract.
Second.
Moved by the avenue seconded by both to approve the hiring of officer Jason Palo as a part-time patrol officer in the village of Sleepy Hollow. And now, an hourly salary of twenty-six fifty-nine. Okay, any further comments, questions or discussion? If the chief has answered out the background information, then ready to go for the swearing in. Well called, well called. Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas. Let me straight, Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Ernie.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes. Motion so carries. Payal. You are. I look to pay a part-time officer. This is part where we started earlier today. Fairly straightforward. Just raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
I mean, state your name.
Jason Palo.
Have been duly hired for the position of patrol officer in the village of Sleepy Hollow.
Have been duly hired for the position of patrol officer in the village of Sleepy Hollow.
King County, Illinois, do solemnly swear.
King County, Illinois, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinance is the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And the ordinance is the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of patrol officer to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of patrol officer to the best of my ability.
Welcome to the village.
Thank you.
Well, okay. Got that taken care of, then I'll return to the regular published agenda. We've got the president's report and the civility pledge. I'll take it this evening in the interest of speeding things along. Civility pledge states, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we can all strive, that we are all striving to support and improve our community and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Okay, moving on to the president's report. There's a couple of items I'd like to bring up this evening. Uh, first and foremost, uh, one of the things that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention is that, uh, while we have got a couple of months yet to finish off the budget, I am making a request to the finance committee for them to consider the village entering into the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund as a pension fund for all of our employees, police and regular administrative public works employees. Uh, it has been a long time. We've not had a pension. We have had a four fifty-seven program. But we have had calls for the pension. Uh, those of you not familiar, through the years, the police have tried to join the downstate pension. Uh, they were not successful in that. But, uh, the IMRF is another alternative to that program. It is a highly respectable pension program. It is not troubled like some other pension programs. It's not having the issues in the press that some other pension programs have. And I think it's time that the village of Sleepy Hollow looked at being aggressive in helping our department heads get employees. And, yeah, we don't have the highest salary in the neighborhood. You know, we do have a decent health insurance program, but that's not enough to keep them. And the four fifty-seven isn't enough to entice them through. Uh, maybe the IMRF will be the avenue that will help us uh, retain and recruit, you know, employees coming. So I just wanted to let that be known this evening. That is something, you know, the finance committee will be looking at and coming back with, I hope, we a favorable recommendation to this board that we pursue the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund as a pension program for employees. Okay. That's going to be a big step. Uh, the next one is also going to be a rather, uh, bold step too. Uh, currently in the state of Illinois, there is a process that's referred to as administrative adjudication. And what administrative adjudication is, is a program that is set up so that municipalities could take offenders to their various ordinances and codes to a, uh, type of a court hearing without having to go to utilize the courts in state of Illinois. Uh, this was a program that was pretty much pushed years ago by the city of Chicago. Every time that you take a ordinance violation or code violation to the courts, you get into the court dockets, you get delayed, you get continuances, come back, you get the way, you get another continuance, then the fine is assessed and the courts take ninety percent and leave ten percent to the municipalities. Well, that's Cook County. It's not quite that bad in King County. But Cook County pushed this some thirty years ago to be allowed to have some type of adjudication system to process these code violations and ordinance violations without utilizing. And they came up with this administrative adjudication. The state statute, the state legislature developed the plan, set everything up, and everything went ahead and moved forward. Then sometime early nineteen hundred, nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand or so, they modified some of those statutes to allow non-home rule implementers like Sleepy Hollow to utilize some type of administrative adjudication. We currently do utilize administrative adjudication with our police department on some items. Primarily the administrative tug and impoundment. We use the administrative adjudication. We do that in-house. We collect the fees in-house. We don't go to the courts. This is the same program now to the state as of June thirtieth, I believe it was, Pritzker signed the statute making the public act available to non-home rule municipalities to utilize the adjudication processes that were established for the home. So as of January first, we will be able to revise and review our ordinances to include administrative adjudication within the village of Sleepy Hollow. That means that when we have some of these code violations, we no longer send them to court. With Mr. Schuster, and we have to take the continuance and we come back and we take a continuance and we come back. We get assessed a fee and the fee goes to a collection agency with the county, and then when it gets through the collection agency, then they provide us our small percentage. This will eliminate that. This will all be done in-house. The fees will come to us. And the adjudication process is set out into state statutes. So it is a very transparent situation. We will have to go through the process of obtaining an adjudicating lawyer. We cannot just simply hire our village attorney and say he's going to do it. There is a process. They have to be trained by the state. They're certified. They've got to have three years' experience. And then they can go out and hang up their shingle and say, we're an adjudicator. The goals of the process is that we'll have to go through. It's an extremely transparent thing. The difference now though is that when the ticket is issued, they will come to our adjudication hearing. Then it will be judged and assessed then and there. And if they do not pay, then we're the ones who take to the collection agency, not the courts. And also the nice thing about it is the reasons for obtaining a delay or continuation are almost the same. You cannot continue to kick the hammer. Now, the other thing about the whole thing, of course, is the nice part is the transparency. It is a program set up by the state. There is an appeal process to anybody that wants to appeal the adjudication that they receive from the village. In that case, you will just simply pick everything up and take it to the courts. And then we'll go from there. But in the long run, I think this is going to be cost-saving and it's time-saving issue for the village. And it will keep things in-house a lot closer and a lot easier. Uh, then this next week, uh, Tony, the chief, finance director Eugene Van, myself, uh, the building inspector, uh, Mrs. Detmer and Jeff Watt will be getting together to discuss and talk about the implementation of the adjudication program within the village of Sleepy Hollow. So it's just something that will be coming at us after the first year. A program that was not available, but, uh, as of January first, we can get that process. We will have to do some changes here within the village, but, uh, I think, you know, we'll be well worth it in the long run. Look forward to more on that as we go on. Uh, okay, that's it for the president's report, our first report.
The only thing I have tonight is to give a heads up to all of the, uh, uh, members of the board that, uh, uh, starting January one, it's open season for, uh, you folks to file your economic interest statement. It'll be filed online. This is all handled by the King County Attorney's Office. Uh, I'm the one that, uh, gets to rat on you and send them all your information and so they know how to contact you. So, uh, if anyone has any change of address, change of cell phone numbers, those little tidbits, uh, I will be reaching out to you in, in, uh, January. Not tonight. I'll be re- reaching out to you in January to get that information because I'm required to, uh, supply that to King County attorney. And then you will go online, fill it all out online, and it has to be done by the end of April. Uh, because if not, you will get fined for not, for not violating the time of passion. Uh, and they have a much better ability to adjudicate and chase fines than, than we do. Yeah, that's all I have to mention.
Uh, one quick thing on that. Yes, your personal. Yes, your personal, not here. Not your village. So that way you're not disclosing anything to us.
It goes to the, goes to King County. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tony. Uh, planning and zoning, Kelly is all out of town this evening and Mrs. Detmer is not with us. But we did have a note left with us that ICCI will be closed for the holidays, December twenty-third, ruled January first. We'll be reopening for inspections on Tuesday, January second. And there have been arrangements made for any emergency services. Should anybody need a code inspection during that period, they will have an emergency service available to take care of. Okay, that's it for the planning and zoning and attorney's report. There's no report this evening. We'll have him later on. The engineer has provided a report. It was a very simple, one-sentence statement. There's nothing new. So we'll take that as an end of the year report from the engineer and move on to the finance report from Mr. Green.
Request a motion for the approval of the warrants, the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and eighty-two cents.
So moved.
Second, honey. Moved by Thor and seconded by Harnett to approve the warrants of December twen- eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the amount of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and eighty-two cents. Any additions, deletions, comments, questions? A nine, all call please. Mr. Dattley. Aye. Mr. Harnett. Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes. So carries then. Okay. Anything else, Eugene?
Nope, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Eugene. Uh, next item is public comments. This is Martinez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. You all know who I am. Been here a couple meetings now. Uh, yeah, I just want to say thank you for everybody volunteering and being here. And I want to say, uh, in the past, I brought up communication. Thank you for being so gracious and keeping it clean with me. I think that this has improved at least when it comes to the trustees, and I appreciate that very much. I just wanted to say that I've been asked to establish an escrow account for future, uh, village professional costs. I have reached out to Mrs. Detmer regarding, uh, this to get the escrow agreement for review. I haven't heard back. So waiting on that. We're ready to set up whatever escrow that is asked of us, and we're, we just want to move forward. Uh, so we hope, you know, we could get this ball rolling hopefully. So thank you again for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Okay, trustee report, roads and parlor, Mr. Harnett.
Uh, one item I was told today, they might have been inspected today. Playground equipment was inspected. Naturally, our new equipment passed. It's actually no problem, so it's inspected. The old set for the little kids, we were told there's a footing that's bad and one of the they said pipes, I had it, I looked at it this afternoon. Is cracked. It's perfectly safe. But that's something the finance committee should be aware of. They'll need to have that repaired. I think we can repair it in-house.
That's the old piece, they?
Yeah, the old, the old piece. Nothing else to read.
All right, thank you, Ed. Appreciate it. Uh, finance, Mr. Thorn.
No report, Mr. President.
Anything more? Water and sewer, Ms. Polo.
Uh, still ongoing conversations with members in the community for the, the water, the wastewater meter. Um, some new questions have arise, arisen, arise, arose, one of those. And also it is very difficult to get ahold of people right now during the holidays, so I will continue to follow up and hopefully we'll have more progress in the new year.
Okay, glad to hear about that. So, uh, one thing, I was speaking of the new year, uh, you're going to want to check your calendar. You and I and Mr. Van, Mr. Steele and Mr. Killinger need to get together, uh, shortly after the first year.
Okay.
We have to start looking at making an application to the Illinois, uh, I E P A for the water main, uh, replacement. That's going to be a three point five to a seven million dollar loan. And it's going to take us six, eight weeks to get that application together. Uh, the deadline for the EPA is the end of March.
End of March.
So we want to get back to you as soon as possible. It's the first year if you could, uh, get back to us with the, you know, the guidance and we'll get that moving.
Okay.
We got a big project to do. Okay, anything else, Keith Courtney? Move to police and public safety, Mr. Deatley.
Uh, just one thing to talk about, um, body cam funding, um, and grant analysis. I'll ask the chief to speak on that. She heard it just shortly. Uh, this is something that came up several years ago. Um, this is all going to be coming about. We are getting closer to those days where it has to be implemented and it has to be done. So I'm going to ask the chief to, uh, refresh all his findings and what he's looking at there.
We will be mandated to have eye scans January of twenty twenty-five, basically. So during the end of the budget year, it will begin. Um, the, the organization that I got the grants for. The, the organization that I got the grants for our, in our videos, also does grants for body cams. It's competitive grant, um, it's not, it's not exactly the same, that it's a one-to-one match. So the boss and I'm getting a refresh estimate now, uh, but our, our, the old estimate that I had for body cams was about twenty-seven thousand, a little over twenty-seven thousand dollars total. Um, that included some of the data storage and some of the other things. Um, I'm, I'm expecting the refresh quote to be a little bit higher than that, um, because this quote was good through March official. Well, one of the things I'm going to try and build into the grant is five years of data storage as well. It's an allowable request, so if I can do that, I can at least cut our data storage uh, costs in half for the next five years. So I'll be writing, writing that grant, that's really what I'm looking for, the board's permission is to go ahead and move forward. I'm hoping that our, our expense won't be much more than sixteen or eighteen thousand dollars total. For all of the body cams for our department. And I know my predecessors had given a quote for, for body cams and I think it was somewhere north of fifty thousand. So I, I think we'll be in a much better position getting this grant to control our cost management.
We need a motion to uh, get the chief authorization to move forward on this grant proposal?
Yes, if I can make a motion for, to authorize the chief to move forward on the grant proposal for body cam funding.
Okay.
Moved by DeHaven, seconded by Pato to authorize the chief to proceed with the grant of application for the body cam storage. Any teleconference questions or discussion?
Um, just a quick little note, and I know with conversations like the chief said with this predecessor and everything. Uh, as we move forward with this, yeah, the, the cameras are costly and that, but the storage of the data is very expensive to do. Uh, because you're storing a lot of, of data there that comes out. So uh, that, trying to work with that to get that five years in there is very important. Um, and that hopefully should save us a fair amount of money there. So uh, hopefully we can get that accomplished and then move forward with that.
It's amazing to see how this thing has progressed, I mean, as you said. So I'm eight, ten years ago, it was a fifty thousand dollar a year thing, now it's in a twenty-seven, maybe we can get it down to seventeen.
Hopefully, hopefully, there's more, there's more players in the game now.
Yeah.
Several years ago, there was really only one Exxon, we're the only, the only game in town, so we kind of got rid of the market and that market expanded, so there's some better options.
This will accompany with this will be the policy and procedures and the manual for the operation.
Policies are already written.
All ready, set to go.
Yep.
Yeah, better than that. The only thing we don't have is the funding for the uh, people that have to research. When we have a call and say we want to see this, see that.
Yep.
That's going to be time-consuming, somebody's going to have to sit and look through all that. Okay.
The advantage now is that King County, the state's attorney has a, a portal set up that we can digitally upload now. Which, that used to be a big problem with, you know, we get it, you get it burned, you get burned a desk. We're going to put it on a flash drive and send it to somebody, which was exceptionally expensive. So the digital upload will help control our cost setting.
Okay, thank you for the update, anything else, Mr. DeHaven?
That's it.
Thank you, Steve, thank you, chief.
I, I do one more, just a, a shout out, I'd like to give to a couple of my officers, a week goes Saturday, they volunteer their time. Uh, about six hours of their time to participate in the shop with a cop program. Um, and, and one of our Sleepy Hollow families was also involved in that. So Officer Stegman and Officer Peterson donated their time and took part in that. So it's, 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 I've done it myself and it's an awesome, awesome thing to, to see how we can impact those families in positive ways.
Finally, we're able to participate. All right, okay, thank you, gentlemen, uh, building and environments.
No report.
Yeah, uh, building and zoning. Kelly is out of town, so there is no report there.
Um, point of order, I think we must have voted on DeHaven's motion.
We need to vote.
Oh, that's right, just got into talking about, okay, let's back up, thank you all. On the motion to authorize the chief to proceed with his uh, grant application. All in favor, seconded by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So carries, thank you all. Okay, now back to old business. All right, uh, number two, resolution, mending a personnel manual. Got that uh, on the agenda this evening. That was brought before us earlier, do we have any comments, questions or discussion about the revision of the personnel manual? To comply with the paid leave for all workers act? Not, we have a motion to so approve the ordinance number, what was that, resolution number? We're not numbering resolutions yet, according to the attorney, we're not, that's what he said. Well, if you want to give it a number, it'd be five, six, the two. I'd like to give a number, you know, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, I have to check with, five sixty-two.
Right.
Motion to approve resolution five sixty-two.
Move for five sixty-three. Second, DeHaven.
Moved by Harney, seconded by DeHaven to approve resolution five sixty-two, amendment to the personnel manual. To authorize the part-time leave for all workers act and put it in our manual. So that we comply with all the requirements of the state. A copy of that was forwarded to you later this afternoon, so any comments, questions or discussion? Motion? Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm calling for a vote without a motion now. The name is trustee Newton. Okay, uh, it does include, it's going to be a roll call for this, okay. Mr. DeHaven.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre.
Aye.
Six, five affirming votes, no negative votes, a motion, so carries. Since it did include wages, it figure, it should be a roll call. All right, uh, the next item that comes in is the approval of the memorandum of understanding. With uh, the Village of Sleepy Hollow and the Illinois Council of Police. Okay, they are representatives in the bargaining agreement with the full-time and part-time policemen. Uh, the full-time police agreement covered the paid leave act issues that were addressed. And the amendment change we just made. However, the contract with the part-time police officers did not have that qualifying language in it. So with the memorandum of understanding, the union has accepted our changes to our personnel manual. As it will affect the part-time officers with the paid leave act. So that is what we're doing with the, um, approval of the memorandum of understanding. Also, if you'll note, the union has already signed off on it, so what we're looking for here this evening is uh. A motion and authorization for the village to sign that emoji and move forward with that.
I move that the village sign and approve the memorandum of understanding?
Second.
Moved by both, seconded by Thor to authorize the signing of the memorandum of understanding that I. Any further comments, questions or discussion? It deals with wage issues, we only call once a week. Okay, Mr. DeHaven.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Five affirming votes, no negative votes, so carries. All right. Okay, under old business, we've missed ordinance twenty-three fourteen, I will bring to your attention a memo on your uh, seat. Uh, which cites Title VII of the Village Code Book. Section, uh, Title I, section fourteen, regarding consultant and professional fees. The notes are all settled and squared away, we will address the pool cover issue. So that's where we stand in the city. But uh, we'll be moving on from there, so. Any questions on?
I'm not sure, you said, once we address these?
Once those have been resolved.
And that's holding back us passing the ordinance currently, so we won't be voting on the ordinance tonight?
Nope.
What?
This was discussed the last meeting. Brought it up, it's outstanding to me.
For twelve will be tendered? Okay.
In the vicinity of thirty-eight hundred bucks. Historically, we require a escrow account be established. Uh, in these expenditures going forward, cited in the code book. Title VII, chapter one, fourteen. That these fees will be paid by the applicant. And do, so when those fees are paid, then I will reconsider bringing that to the floor in consideration. Okay? Understand that there's been communication between ICCI and the Martinez in regards to.
Sure, it's professional, that's what it's like.
Professional and now consulting fees are required to be paid by the applicant.
The escrow for future is what I heard, I didn't, I didn't hear anything about thirty-eight hundred.
Well, that's what we've got on the books right now.
That's the first I heard.
You will be hearing from Mrs. Detmer in the next.
You know, I'm defending those fees being taken care of. Does anybody see anything in the code that would further delay it? So that's all we're waiting for then, so, okay.
It's just, I don't feel it's fair to the rest of the residents of the village. To continue in this when we've got an applicant that owes the village money. So until those situations have evolved.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's like, you know, what we need to do is go and get everybody things.
This will turn some hearing, but. Like, you guys haven't brought this up, you know, unless it would have been paid.
Okay. Okay, that's it for old business, moving into new business, uh, the doctor B taking care of A. The approval of a full-time maintenance worker for Public Works. Has been presented to us this evening. Mr. Killinger has an applicant that he would like to bring forward. Uh, as an employee to the village, a Joseph Miller. He would like to bring him on at an hourly rate of twenty dollars an hour. Motion is so approved, so.
Second.
Moved by Harney, seconded by Thor to authorize the hiring of a Joseph Miller at an hourly rate of twenty dollars. For Public Works, any further comments, questions or discussion?
Uh, I'll add a little bit to it, I talked to Kyle at length, he's had some, several applicants, this applicant. Has experience, he's been trained, he comes from the Park District. He has a CDL, which is important, you don't have to. Get, other applicants haven't had their CDL and we require them to get it. And we help them with that process, that won't be necessary. He has plowed, uh, for the Park Dist- district that he comes from. So I would highly recommend that we approve Kyle's recommendation.
Other comments or questions, roll call please. Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Ms. DeHaven.
Aye.
Five affirming votes and no negative votes, the hire is authorized, all right? Any other new business to come before the board?
I'd like to make one comment. Sure, if there's no other new business, I'm stepping out of my lane, I'll ask for a policy later. But as a reminder, the chief has invited all of us to go through their simulator training. And I think that's coming up fairly close to this month. He can fine tune the dates, I did it last year. It's a real, I, I don't think a, a police officer could encounter any day on the job. And it's fun to do, this is simple, if, if you can do it, I would highly recommend it, I'm going to sign it.
What's the date of that again?
Simulator should be delivered this week, I'll get confirmation tomorrow. Usually I wait until this door meeting because we got to break everything down there and push all the tables.
What they do is have a notice to trustees.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they set up a big screen in here and it's a sim- simulator. And, and you're out, you have to handle situations that a typical police officer would encounter on the street.
So you will lose about ten pounds and sweat.
Yeah.
Your heart rate will go at about two fifteen.
Courtney and I are a little younger than everybody else. I'll sweat, I'll totally sweat.
It, it is really. Uh, they do this right, we'll like, we'll like, yeah, we understand how it would look, these people go through on the street.
I was killed in the first three minutes, but then I learned quick, so. That's all.
It is interesting, isn't it? Okay, any other comments for the good of the cause? If not?
Motion.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, seconded by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. I hope to see you all next year.
I'll take that again.
We got the motion. I gave the motion, Mark got the motion. Thanks.